Back in session, back in session.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
The nice thing about this meeting is we get to be a little less formal.
Yes.
Joe asked to be here when we were still planning on having our conversation about Commissioner committees and timing and the WTIP interview and I didn't have, I just couldn't tell him that, you know what, we already had that conversation, but we still want him here now.
Yeah.
Because he wants to have a conversation about the WTIP interview and some possible changes in that format.
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you.
Take it away.
All right, for having me here. Briefly, we just run into some, not confusion or complications, but just with coordinating who's, which commissioner is going to be, we kind of sometimes don't know until moments before if, who's going to come or if and so forth. So, in speaking with Jeff and Martha, who kind of coordinates that show at the radio station, we were wondering if it would be something you all would be interested in and it sounds like everyone's here obviously then on Tuesday, to come to the station on Tuesday after the meetings and then we would pre-record the interviews on Tuesday, you know, stick to the same schedule or whatever works, but instead of doing it live on Wednesday mornings. And then for programming, it works for us because we know how long the interview is going to be. We'll still shoot for 10 minutes and then we're not in there and some of the hosts are wondering how long or running into pop quiz or some of these other unfortunate circumstances.
Running into pop quiz is very stressful.
Yes.
So, if it's something you would be interested in and on these Tuesdays where the committee of the whole, it sounds like, you know, you go till maybe three, but we could either do it at this break here at noon or, you know, you can come at three, whatever you feel is best.
That would be incredible because I know that we have out of town meetings on Wednesday and difficulties for commissioners.
Well, that's what it seemed like, yeah. Wednesdays maybe just were becoming somewhat problematic and then you all were having to kind of rearrange or switch and that that is leading to further complications. If we can do it Tuesday, pre-recorded, and then it gives us, I'll be doing these interviews now, Jay, as no longer doing them, and so it would be, give us a chance to kind of debrief a little more. Instead of, you know, you come just a couple of minutes before, the host is kind of looking out the window going, "Okay, you're up," and we've hardly had a chance to speak or on the phone or beforehand. So, I think it'll just be a more relaxed atmosphere with the interviews as well, so.
So, do you want me at 3:15?
Um, we can either start today, yeah, or we could do it.
3:15 I'll be there.
3:15 today, okay, let's start it this week then if that's good for you and then.
Everyone else is okay then?
And then on days where there's not committee of the whole and it's, we don't really know when the meeting's going to end, I'm usually watching them, you know, on video, so I'll know when you'd be coming and you could just come right when it ends, basically.
Oh, great, because we know we're there for the meeting.
That's, yeah, it's everyone's here and then you just, it would be.
And if we're not, we'd be no good in the interview.
And Rhonda's, and Rhonda's doing news at noon now all the time?
Yep.
Okay, so you're free for us, awesome.
So, if it sounds good, let's just plan on Tuesday. We kind of, you know, we lose that spontaneity of the live interview, which is something that can be.
It'll be spontaneous, because you can edit it.
But now we can, I think with the format of pre-recorded, we can have a lengthier, more in-depth discussion beforehand, which I think can add value, so.
Well, that helps because you do the update on our meetings and so then when we come in and talk to Jay, we kind of all say the same thing. So, having us talking to you directly, then that way you can format your update.
Sure, yeah, I think it'll be a good thing all around, so. And if it isn't working for whatever reason, it doesn't have to be set in stone, we can go back to the nine o'clock on Wednesday live, but I think we should explore this.
That sounds great.
It would work well for all.
Good, awesome.
So, generally, are there, are there other changes in the news format and the distribution of the work and what's going on up there, is anything?
Um, yeah, there is.
Okay.
I mean, we're.
Internal stuff?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Always improving?
Well, yeah, and, I mean, since this is being recorded and so forth.
Now, how do you like that here?
Oh, actually, no, but we're gradually making some changes at the station, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, so is that okay with Myron?
Sure, I'm just going to show up next week, right one window.
At any time next Tuesday, like I say, I'll be watching the meeting live, so I'll know you'd be, you know, roughly, you'd be coming in 15, 20 minutes, sure. Don't feel rushed if you need to discuss, I'll be there, so.
Okay, yeah, I like that.
Just follow that pattern and I don't know with Commissioner Shaw, with him now, I haven't seen an updated list, I just had this old one in my record, but is there?
I'll get you a new one.
Okay.
We have a new one.
Okay.
And the other thing I would comment is that the second Tuesday, we have a personnel committee meeting at one to three in the afternoon, so depending on who's on the list for that day, it may be at three o'clock, and then the third Tuesday is committee of the whole and then the fourth Tuesday we're done after that, so not for the standing committees.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just, so understand that there's some flexibility depending on people's schedules. So, sometime either after the meeting or as close to three o'clock as possible because now your, your day starts earlier than it used to start.
Yeah, so if, on those personnel committee meeting days, if you can come before.
Yeah.
The earlier would be better for us because then I can put it into this folder so the show knows exactly how long it is and they can all kind of walk away. You know, the, the hosts of that morning show are all volunteers, so we try to just be as accommodating to them as we can be with time and that length of interviews and so forth, so.
Sounds great.
The earlier on Tuesdays you can come, great, but on, on the committee of the whole meetings, if it's 3:15, that, that is fine, that makes sense.
But if we are out earlier, we come earlier.
Yep, yep. So.
Because today was, well, committee of the whole's always on the Health and Human Services board meeting, so it'll always run longer, so that's always going to be, I mean, it's because it's two meetings.
But we said at one kind of so we could take a lunch. Do you have your smartphone on you? Okay, that Jeff made, I was going to say, otherwise you could take a picture of mine.
Have you had any issues with the Public Health and Human Services, with us reaching out to each one?
Uh, you mean as far as you come in and doing an interview like the commissioners do?
Mm-hmm.
That's something we could discuss, certainly, yeah, I mean, I probably don't have the authority to just say, "Yeah, let's do it."
When we first came, I thought that we had staff that were doing presentations on. Maybe we're wrong.
On the radio?
I know that, I think Heidi has been down a few times talking about various topics. I don't think it was a regular, you know, the commissioner interviews are every Tuesday or Wednesday previously after the Tuesday meetings, just sort of irrespective of what the agenda was or what they discussed, it was just a slotted time. I don't, not in my time, I don't think we've ever had Human Services, but that, again, would be something definitely.
They, fortunately, we used to, you know, we have a, each, each one of the Human Services board has the one person that presents each month, I have one of the staff present on one of the program areas, and they used to, once a month, would go to the radio and re-present or ask questions about the program area.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, all are welcome to come down, we could coordinate that or send a meeting.
That would be helpful because there's often questions about the public health budget and some confusion as to what's going on.
Yeah, or even, Josh, if you just wanted to come and give a periodic update of, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a live spot, you know, or we could sit down and kind of discuss what we wanted to go over before. I could definitely see, see value in that, too.
Because we had hiring today and that's often where there's confusion, when someone will say, "Oh, they're adding more staff."
On my board instead of your board, so it never does.
That would be good.
We get confused.
Yeah, good.
Great.
Okay, well, then we'll start these today, it sounds like.
Yeah.
On it.
To that point, you're also going to be getting a board summary from our communications office after each board meeting.
Yep, yeah, we saw that last week.
Oh, that's true, we won't have an opportunity coming to respond to that and be on the radio, but, so, well, it'll be spontaneous.
Now you know.
So, it won't be professional. We'll use our own words.
Yeah, take a week. No, that's, so, we'll give this a shot and I think it, I can see it working well, so.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, so AMC District One County update is my item on the agenda and I just asked that this go on the agenda because my recollection of these district meetings is that there's a spokesperson and they give a report from the county.
Yep.
And when, so the last two years while Heidi was chair, she would give the report. So, I've got it on the agenda just to, A, we're becoming more professional by our reporting in all ways to the community and elsewhere, so I just thought it'd be worthwhile just to have just a brief conversation about how we would like to do this as kind of one voice from the county, like what subjects do we want to cover? I mean, it's only like a two, three minute thing, so it's not like a huge report, but do we want to, do other people want to speak? I know they're, they're all over the place.
Number one that you should mention is our law enforcement center that we've put out to take a look at whether or not we're going to expand that, because other counties need the house and this has been at almost all of our meetings that they've said they've got issues and problems and what do we do and where do we move them, so I think we should let them know that we're looking at it.
Yep, and, and what we've done so far, so far is put on an RFP to study the possibilities.
Yep.
And, and let's call it a justice center.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, other subjects that we want to cover, highlights that we really want.
New commissioner.
What's that?
We have a new commissioner.
New commissioner.
I would suggest that we, you know, were using the committee of the whole as part of our process.
Become cows.
We've all turned into cows.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Maybe something about housing. Yes.
We talked about 388 brackets and some.
Yeah. So, will we have time to get this out to Valerie and then she can create a speech? Or, well, we have to do it.
Are you taking notes or am I?
I'm taking notes, I'm taking notes, no, it's fine.
Do you want to pass EVA to me when it gets to that?
Okay, so that's what I'm getting for, getting, I'm getting for this.
You're getting for this.
Yes, you are. Okay, so housing will be part of the EVA and that will be Heidi. New commissioner, justice, so the subjects, we'll just make the subjects and then if people want to grab a subject, we can create our performance. Yeah, yes, it won't be quite as static as those counties. Those law enforcement centers, but, so what other, what other things do we want to say? Because we don't, we don't have much time, so.
Two minutes, well, that probably is enough for two minutes.
Are those the highlights? Do we want to say anything about daycare and that we're working on?
Oh, yeah, it's probably a big one. I've had the meetings with Martha and Mike Canyon.
Yeah, so Myron, do you want to take that one?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, at the meeting?
Yeah.
You want me to talk about childcare?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
That would be good because Lake County will be there, so it's a possibility for a partnership.
How much time?
Thirty seconds.
Two minutes for the whole thing.
We have two minutes for this whole?
Yeah.
We meant, we listened.
Yeah.
I would suggest we just have one spokesperson.
Okay, and that?
I mean, if we're going to do it in two minutes.
Well, we could do.
It really honestly might be easier for one person to do a summary.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, otherwise, I know whenever you repeat people, it's going to be a lot longer.
Okay.
You could rehearse tonight.
I'd love to talk, but I don't think I can do that in two minutes.
Okay.
This and this and this.
Because I, I mean, I'm fine, I'm happy to do the whole thing, it's not, but I just didn't know, because some counties, you know, they spread it out and then they just report some all over the room, but I can do it all and I can do it in under two, in under two minutes.
Okay.
So, is there anything else?
Sounds like plenty.
Okay.
Here's the projects for the EVA.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Yes. A little stirring of the imagination, yes.
While we're talking about AMC, I've had difficulty, and maybe others have too, that when we go to these conferences, you know, Julie puts it on the credit card and I know I had a problem with Breezy Point, I mean, then ended up getting billed on mine because whoever checked out with the credit card didn't put me on the county one. So, I know we need to agree with the procedure now, when I had the credit card one time, I just made sure when I checked out that I checked out everyone else that was there from the county. But so, I think we need to, I mean, decide how we're going to deal with this.
Okay.
Because it's been charged, but, but when we're receiving in, if no one checks us out on that card, it goes on our personal card.
Right.
And, you know, and that's not a big deal, but sometimes it's.
Unfortunately, that's a, that is an issue very specific to Grandview.
Oh.
Their billing and reservation system is 1950s and we just don't have that same problem with most of the other places that we go to.
No, Grandview billed me and the county.
You have to watch Grandview no matter what you do.
Not to pick on Grandview, we love Grandview. But when you check in, verify and make it clear when you check in, that way if there is an issue, then, then you can send Julie an email and she will call in for you and resolve it, that's what I've.
But it doesn't happen, I mean, there's nothing you can do, you go up there and you tell them, put it on their company card and they say, "Yes, we will."
They don't know what that means.
And when you check it out, they say, "I specifically said," well, okay, if it's not a problem elsewhere, then that's fine.
It's not, and they'll ask you for a personal card for amenities, so when you check out, just say, "Can you verify that you're not charging on this card?" Because when you say company card, whichever, because I've worked in reservations, whichever first number pops up is the one they use.
Well, that's what I did, didn't I?
Yeah, and that, that resort is a one-time deal.
Okay.
I think we all had issues, you had issues.
See what happens.
So, for this event, the rooms have been booked, they would shave some.
But why do we have to give our personal credit cards when it's covered?
Because if you have additionals, like if you get a coin down to your room, that doesn't go on the county. And all hotels now ask for a credit card in case you have additional charges, they need to ask for that.
We'll work on that one. Is anybody taking the card?
It's not a big deal.
No, but I can go grab it, I've done it in the past.
Yeah, okay. We're good with AMC, we're going and.
Email the update.
And I know the update. Are you going, Jeff?
I'll be there.
Okay, awesome. Great, so that's, that's it on AMC, unless somebody has something else and we can move on to the next item, the NACO membership and representation.
Okay, so they have a credentials voting form and that's due by July 7th. And I kind of wanted this added to the agenda because I have had people from AMC leadership, fellow commissioners around the state and NACO staff that have stated to me that we are missing a voice from Cook County at these meetings and a vote from Cook County. And I've been asked in the past to do it, but the current budget situation, I didn't want to add anything to the budget by adding a person to go to this committee. So, I'm asking this group to consider whether or not on the 2018 budget we put in for this event. From what I've heard from NACO and AMC and the members that are on from other counties is that the annual meeting is the most important meeting and it's most important to us as a rural community, so I think there's three meetings a year, I don't believe we can afford all three, but that's up to you guys.
So, why do you say we can't afford all three? Because they're, they're large travel, they're, they involve.
It's $600 for the event.
Oh, each one?
Yep, the current one that I looked up for registration that's in Ohio is 600 for us to be included to go, there are additional meetings that are on there that are 110 apiece. The rooms, there's like six options, the minimum room is $139 at three nights, so that's $1,000 right there. And then travel and airline ticket from Duluth right now is about $500.
Okay.
So, that is why I have not asked for it to be added to our expense list because, and this is one of the least expensive ones because of where it is, you know, other locations, when I've looked up how much it is, the airline tickets can be as much as $3,000, depending on where they're going, for California last year, it was pretty expensive to get a flight.
I think if, if they're done productively.
Still, we're talking about a $2,000 investment for a meeting.
Okay, and that's what I was looking for, so $2,000 times four.
I think it'd be, that's up to the group.
With premiums, it would probably, if we wanted to join NACO, we would probably have to allocate six to $10,000, Brady, does that seem reasonable that if we're going to support the travel and participation?
Depending on the number of meetings.
Right, somewhere between six and $10,000, I itemized in the budget for that plus, you know, we're already paying dues.
Seems important to me, I mean, if you look at all, you know, our 128 committees and how valuable AMC is to this group and NACO would probably be equally as valuable. And not that we all go, but it seems valuable to be a part of that national voice and just, yeah, showing up on the national screen just seems really, really valuable. Have we ever been a member of NACO?
Yes, Bob Fenwick, I think, was the last one.
I mean, we've been a member of it for, forever, for as long as I know, but when people are served on the committees and go to the meetings, that hasn't happened that often, Wes Heston used to go.
We want that model.
And Bob Fenwick, I can't remember that anyone else, maybe somebody else did too.
And that's part of the discussion is who, who on the board do we, I mean, because I know that Wes isn't the last one to go, but he's one that they remember him being there and his voice from this community and so I think that's another discussion, if we add it to the 18 budget, we need to decide who we want representing us as our voice.
So, I went ahead and looked into this because when I was down at the workshop a week ago today, I talked to Lori and so she said, "I know you talked to me in January, I talked to Julie, but the committees are getting limited as to what you'd represent." She said, "Health and Human Services are available." So, I looked at the program for the conference in Ohio and there's a lot. There is steering committee, health policy, county cannabis roundtable, county roundtable talk about health, solution sessions, first time attendees breakfast, rural action, and then there's a Minnesota delegation that gets together, using technology to build healthier counties, opioid epidemic solutions, and so there is plenty in that, you know, in that area of the health that's, that's available. So, like Heidi said, then you start looking into, well, out of Duluth, you can do for $450 round trip. When you get down there, the room would be probably, you know, close to $800, $900 and then your reservation, you know, for the whole, for the whole thing. These, these extra ones I would not recommend, I mean, they're good, but not for $110 extra. There's a couple of them that they charge extra beyond what your reservation is. So, I would put it out there that we put it in the budget for next year and I'll go this year and take care of it myself, because that way we'll have an idea about what this whole thing means to us, because it is important, especially when you get to Pilt. And you also have these other meetings, not that maybe you can attend to all of them beyond that meeting, but you have conference calls, which I talked to two commissioners from International Falls and they've participated in, in just, you know, phone in and videos and that type of thing, so. Throwing that out for discussion.
Okay.
So, you would buy it totally yourself? Mm-hmm. Well, I think somebody's got to do it, you know, we have to start and AMC wants, you know, a representative from this region to be active in that.
I was kind of looking at having the board chair as the voice for the county, so that when the board chair, if we decide to budget for this, it would be a board chair position. If the board chair can't make it, they would have an alternate that's decided by all of us, but then, because the board chair's kind of expected to speak on our behalf.
I mean, that makes sense in the grand scheme of things.
That doesn't mean that the board chair is the person that goes.
Right, right.
But that, but I think if you're, if you're saying, "We want to fill this out, we want to fill out who our designee is," then we identify the board chair and if we determine that we want a different procedure for filling board chair, we do that. But the designee can always.
Delegate.
Delegate their votes and their responsibility to the person who's able to attend the event. That's always, that's always what matters, that's what.
Yeah. I'm so glad we have you to translate my Chinese.
Yeah.
And in all honesty, I'm not, I don't like the idea of somebody paying for something that the organization should pay for, if the organization's going to do that, because that prohibits somebody from participating who may not have the ability to foot that bill themselves.
Well, I'm just offering it only as, you know, the beginning.
And I appreciate that, but what I would ask is I would ask Brady for an assessment at some point of where we're at in our travel budget for the commissioner line and MC, what we anticipate we'll spend based on past years and if we're going to be under budget or over budget this year, there may be, I, I don't know if we would have any in there. I know we've, did we underspend this?
We underspent last year. I was just going to look and I didn't get a chance to evaluate, but I'm going to.
I'm sure budgets got down every year since I started.
We, we all do things like we put our hotel room and our registration on there and sometimes we put mileage and sometimes we don't, right? We all take on to ourselves some of the expenses that by our policies we could pass on and we do that because we're trying to be good service, so we all do that. If we're going to send somebody to Ohio and that's what we want to do, picking up the room and the airfare and the registration make a lot of sense and the rest of it, you know, something like that and we certainly don't want to spend beyond what we budgeted for this year because of where we're at in the budget process.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I think it'd be worth asking the question, do we think we have the capacity to pick some of that up? I think a blend of the gracious offer to participate and do that is, is good, but not everybody is always in a position to be able to, to do that and we don't want.
Yeah.
We don't want participation limited by, you know, by individual reasons.
No, but then we work on doing this for the 18 budget.
Yep, exactly.
Right, so that's all I'm throwing out.
Yep.
It's very generous, very generous of you. So, I also, I like the idea of, of finding out if there's room in the budget and I also like the idea of it being a process of either years of experience and/or having been elected as board chair being, or the board chair could make that decision based on if they, they could make it. Or the, or the board can make that decision too based, you know, select the person that the board chair and the major. So, I, I like the idea, are we all, do we have sort of a, well, we can't vote on it, but.
I think we can put it on next week's agenda for Brady to tell us if there's room in the budget.
Yeah, maybe Brady can give us an assessment by Tuesday.
Where he's going.
He's probably going, going to do exactly that.
Yeah. Thoughts, Myron?
I, I don't know, I've been hundreds of national conventions in my career.
And you've loved them all.
I don't have spoiled a lot on them, but I, I think it's worthwhile, but I don't, I, I don't know if it's, they're really charging a lot of money.
This one's, this one's pretty inexpensive.
And this is close.
Yeah, I mean, boy, things have gone up, I guess, but I would assume that they have to use this money for their organization, but, boy, we used to go to Hawaii and that kind of budget.
They've gone to Hawaii last night, on that budget though, I think the Hawaii trip was going to be a $6,000 trip.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, it's just something that.
Well, the AMC conference, that annual conference cost is.
Yeah, but we're all.
Probably more than that. I mean, isn't that like $300 a person? So, this is twice that, which makes sense and we're only sending one person. It seems at least as valuable as that.
And I, you know, I just know that when one person goes, there is a benefit, but it's not like everyone goes.
Yeah, no, I get it, right, I get it.
And so, I'm not against it. I guess I'm willing to defer it, I'm just.
And I'm assuming that.
I think it's a lot of money for what, I'm, this is not critical, our issue, I just think they're charging a lot of money.
Is there only, the, the organization, I'm assuming, also only allows for one person per county, right?
No.
Really?
We have more, no.
So, if you have more, you have more votes?
Yes. The number of votes is determined by the amount of dues the county pays, dues are based on population, all counties are entitled to at least one, members with more than $499 in dues are entitled to one additional vote and then each additional $500 in dues is another vote. And then each additional five hundred in dues is another vote.
Well, that's a horse of a different color.
Counties with dues of five hundred to nine ninety-nine receive two votes. The net, max number of votes a county can receive is a hundred and twenty-one.
Wow.
Those big counties.
Yeah, so you're buying your votes basically.
That's my Phoenix County.
Well, I think that's, that works for me, buying your votes.
The dues, the dues are population-based.
So we're probably at five hundred.
So I don't know what our dues are, but that would be a question. The dues are population-based. You can't just pay more in dues to have more representation.
You know, from my experience is that, you know, it's good to have someone there, but we got to really be careful, I think, in the public. There's just no way we all can benefit from having one person there because that person would have to spend the appropriate amount of time with us, which is impractical. So, you know, it's a, it's a hard sell.
You just have the one topic, you know, like AMC, you go to those. You can't spread yourself out onto environment and transportation, so you just pick the one topic.
Well, the problem I've seen with NACO that I assume have it in Minnesota as well is that because you have the delegates per the counties, the larger counties, obviously, it's a lot easier for them to send their delegates in attendance. You don't get, especially when you get into counties in the three, four, or five thousand population, that the voice just isn't there because the budget's not the same as the large counties. So I would take a guess and say, no, when Commissioner Storey talked to me, you know, we were discussing, well, it'd be nice to have a rural perspective because I know most of the representatives for Maxa that have their commissioners go to the large counties, so there's not a lot of rural voice going to NACO.
And that's the voice that's missing, and that's the voice that's so important to us and not, and to all, all of rural America, it seems like.
I don't want to belabor this, but, you know, it came up at our county, Arrowhead Counties, Arrowhead
County Association.
County Associations, all of New Mexico. There was a discussion there that we should withdraw from the state just because they're not representing rural interests. Because the power is in numbers. I mean, I used to be there, the biggest school system in the state, and we could go to the convention and control it, or dominate it, and we had the expertise to do it, too, you know. So I don't know, but I think it's good, and, but it's, it's a hard sell. I think with the public, that's all I'm saying. We're going to have to be careful how we sell it.
I mean, that's why I didn't add it to the seventeen budget, when we're sitting there having people knock five hundred bucks off of one department for the sake of knocking five hundred bucks off, because it's really hard.
I would also say that that is our only survival. If we don't, I mean, if we don't go out and participate in the greater, then, you know, to not have a voice, just because our voice won't be as powerful, doesn't make any sense to me. But that, that's how you make it. That's how rural survives, is by continually to show up and having a voice.
Well, like I said, when you look at the Commissioner budget, since I started, I think our Commissioner budget, the whole budget for Commissioners has gone down every year since I started. Brady's got his laptop. Now we're in trouble.
And you might learn something that really makes a huge, I mean, the opportunity to learn something that could really make a huge difference is profound.
Or make the right connection.
Or make the right connection, and that Wes Hetstrom did it, I didn't follow suit.
He hasn't been a Commissioner since the nineties, and that's who the President of NACO remembers.
Wow.
Yeah.
I always think six thousand a year over like ten years, sixty grand, that's one small grant that we receive because we meet the right person or something along that lines.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm all for being careful, but I'm also for making wise investments. And I think investing in people to travel, to learn new things is usually a pretty good investment. And that's, and it's creating a niche in the state of Minnesota. Wes Hetstrom is still remembered by the President of NACO. And that's, that says a lot. And because we're in unique county, there's an opportunity to stand out and.
Yeah, the two thousand sixteen conference was in Los Angeles, so it's always in July.
Well, we'll.
I think Ohio's going to be busy, too.
We'll explore that. Well, it'll go on an agenda and we'll.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it. I don't know that, if it's, if it's a budgeted travel expense and within what we've already budgeted, I don't know that we actually need to take action on it, but we can do that research and find out if it's, you know, we belong to the organization. It's not that we're actually
Right, joining it.
needing a vote to take additional action. If it's, again, the monies that we have budgeted, I think we can just do it.
I would be very supportive of that approach.
But then, then if we want to budget more for additional participation in twenty eighteen and future, then that's just something we take up and part of our regular budget conversation.
That's, that's what I'm at.
Great. And then we need to decide at the next Board meeting, we will have information if we have enough in our budget this year.
Yeah, I think we can make an estimate as to what we have.
And then we have to decide who's going, or does that just up to whoever's available?
I think we just accept the offer that we have on the table. It says, I'd like to go, and I'll pay for it. But if there's funds available, I'd take those too, if that's, I, I think that that would be, that's our best opportunity to have representation in seventeen, especially on the deadline.
Well, Health and Human Services is the current committee that's open. Commissioner Storey is our current Health and Human Services Board Chair.
Yep.
And the date works out, too.
I wouldn't, I couldn't, wouldn't, so that would be great. Yeah.
Because of the date?
Because of my life.
I would just like to say that I just don't think we should be going, going to a meeting and adding something to the budget in order to do this. It should be part of our budgeting process.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I kind of, I would like this to wait another year. I mean, we waited five years already.
Well, let's see what happens. I just don't, I just don't think it's good at this point in time to just add it as a budget item.
Well, we wouldn't add it as a budget item. We would look and see if we anticipate that we have, we would just look and see if we anticipate we are going to have enough more money in the budget than. I wouldn't look, I wouldn't consider adding it at this point.
No.
Then we wouldn't, then we wouldn't need a motion.
Okay. So, next on the agenda. The Personnel Committee's Administrator's Performance Review Process.
Here, I'll hand these off one at a time, so you don't get confused. I stapled them together so they all stay together.
Oh, it's a novel. Awesome.
And I took the Land Services copier hostage. There was a whole line of people trying to get work done.
Wow.
Maybe more copying machines?
No, we just, we just needed more right then.
Yeah, just in time copying, that's what you're going for.
So we had a, a conversation at the Personnel Committee meeting, over the last two Personnel Committee meetings. And we talked about the confusion related to the Administrator's evaluation or review process. You'll see that we use some, we use words here intentionally. And what you, what I just handed out to you, the first two pages, is a proposal for the Administrator Review Process. And secondary would be, would possibly be to push this review process down to the Department Head level so that all of the Department Heads are participating in the same process. But that's, that's the second step. First step, right now, we're talking about the Administrator. Last year, the process was, we, I surveyed regional counties, and St. Louis County brought forward what's on the third page of your handout is their performance review process for managers. I'm sorry, so like page five, five and six. The last page in the handout for yours is St. Louis County's Performance Review for Managers. And their system is that all of the Department Heads, all the appointed Department Heads are all treated the same way. That, that this is sent out to the appropriate people, it's summarized in the HR office, and then it's delivered. You know, it's delivered between the supervisor and the Department Head. In the case of the Administrator, what they do is the HR person sends it out to all of the Commissioners. The Commissioners provide that feedback back to HR, it's consolidated, and then it's delivered, and then it's a conversation between the Department, or the Board Chair and the Administrator. So what that process would look like here is Judy would send out the form on the first two pages to you all to fill out. You would provide that input back. It would be summarized. The summary would be brought to the Board to, to accept. And there would be an opportunity to have comments about that. It's, it's still, it's just that we wouldn't have the whole long conversation at a public meeting. And that's part of the reason that St. Louis County did this. We also reviewed MACA, Minnesota Association of County Administrators, is studying this problem. They're studying this opportunity. And about a third of the counties, about half that responded, half, half of the counties responded, about half responded that the Administrator evaluation was done by the full Board in an open, in an open or closed Board meeting, and the Administrator gets to choose. That's what the statute says. And the other half basically said that there was, it was a summary, that it was usually conducted by the Board Chair, or it was an administrative process that was handled by HR. So they're looking to standardize that process so that counties have a best practice to handle the Administrator eval because that's a form, that's something that kind of sits outside of the general practice. Last year, we brought the St. Louis County process to the, to Personnel Committee. It was reviewed in Personnel Committee, it was accepted, we brought it to the Board for the Board to say, this is the process we're going to follow. And then, of course, last year, the process ended up going sideways. And we did, we did something else. So I don't care what the process is this year. I'm throwing it out there for discussion. Commissioner Severson and Dukeirk were at the Personnel Committee meeting, so they, they heard the feedback. One thing that we said we wanted to do, and I didn't get a chance to draw it up, but there would be a page that goes in front of us that says, a performance review should be a review. And, and the things that we added to this on page two is the performance goals, past year's accomplishments, next year's goals. The key thing about a performance review is it should be a review of objectives for the year. It should be a review of strategic plan initiatives for the year, and it should finish with setting goals for the next year, and those goals should be tied to the strategic plan. The performance review, and this is why we took the word appraisal out of it, performance review should not be, is not a disciplinary opportunity. If there's discipline required, that happens separately, and we have other, we have other ways of dealing with that. The performance review should be a summary. There should be no new information introduced. It should be a summary of the work that's been done. And everybody should really understand what's, what's, what's happened and what the expectations are. I don't know that we sent out a copy of the job description when we sent this out last year, and I think the job description should come with this.
Yes.
That's the only way that I can do a, a performance review of any of the people that I supervise, is to go back to the job description and say, what, what are the primary responsibilities, and how well are they meeting the primary responsibilities? So in my past experience as a Chief Appointed Official in cities, what I would do is I would just provide a summary of the work that I did over the past year. I would provide that at a Board meeting. Everybody would have an opportunity to comment, and that would become part of the record. From those minutes, there would just be that conversation, and that would go into the file. That's, that's really, in all honesty, the other half of the counties that didn't respond to the MACA survey, it's probably more formal than what they do. There are a number of Chief Appointed Officials that don't give reviews just because organizations are not really good at managing those.
So instead of doing something like this, you would do a check-in on your past goals and where you're at with them?
If I were to make a recommendation of something that I think would be useful, and I think would be, would be, would serve a purpose, it would be to send this out, which is based on the St. Louis County one, have everybody comment on it. The question last year that was whether or not Department Heads should be involved. I don't have any problem having Department Heads be involved. One thing I do have a problem with is I, I really don't like anonymous comments. I don't think they serve any purpose. I think if we want to gather feedback, we gather feedback. If, if we want to get to that, and we talked about this in Personnel Committee meeting, if we want to get to the point of having everybody provide feedback and comments, I think that's great. And I think we should push that throughout the organization, that we solicit feedback from everybody. I mean, Josh interacts with, with the Attorney's Office. Josh interacts with, you know, all these other departments. Am I getting a complete review of his performance when it's just my perception? Or am I better off getting information from everybody else? Well, we all can see where there'd be value in that. The problem is, I don't know that as an organization, we have the capacity to do that yet. That's a goal. I would say that's a goal. So what I would say is, based on your conversation today, we'll leave this on this, I would propose that we send this out to Commissioners and/or Department Heads, that they would all come back to Judy. She would summarize them. And then we would sit down, and we would review them, and we'd prepare a report to bring back to the Board at a future Board meeting. And part of the reason why this is important is, of course, my anniversary is in.
Four days.
Nine days.
Yeah.
So we would probably kick the process off at the next meeting, not at the next meeting, but we'd just submit the paperwork out, and at some point in July, have it come back, so.
The only thing if it goes to Department Heads is I would require them to respond because I think part of our issue last year is that where some Department Heads didn't respond because they had no issue or anything to respond to, so then all you got was a pile of nasty, not necessarily nasty, but things that people want to change or fix. And I think you need to have a fair assessment of someone, because we did have Department Heads that worked closely with Jeff that feel he's doing a great job, but they didn't feel it was necessary to fill out a review and say, yeah, he's doing a great job. Because they figured that was a given. And we also had to send out two reminders to remind people to return on. Wasn't taking on anyone.
So when you're back at the first page, front and back, is a proposed form, which is based on the third page, front and back. I just took out St. Louis County and put Cook County.
Oh, so this is the same.
It's, it's very much the same, except on the second page, I added the performance goals portion where I said past year's accomplishments, next year's goals.
Oh, awesome.
The page in the middle, front and back, is the current Cook County Performance Appraisal that we use for all of our other staff.
Okay, can you, so this is the new proposed?
No, so you go, yeah, so the very front page, front and back, is the proposed.
The proposed, this is Department Heads?
The middle one is our current.
Current.
Is our current form that we use for everybody else.
For everybody else. And this is where we do the information?
And that's the information that was based out of St. Louis County's review form.
Great, great, great. Excellent. Yes. Yeah, and I think it went sideways, too, because it wasn't, when it, when it went out to Department Heads, it wasn't clear that it was gathering information. That's it. It was not, we were going to have a conversation about this, or it was just, it was a way of gathering information and the benefit to the person who's being reviewed, not, not to go back out and. So it wasn't really understood what the purpose of it was, so.
Right.
Which led to a lot of miscommunication.
Under the performance goals, so we're going to say, these are your past year accomplishments, and this is what I want to see for the next year. Is that right?
In, in, in all honesty, yes, if you wanted to make suggestions when you're filling out the form, I would welcome those. But I think that what we would present to the Board after a meeting with, with the Chair would be a summary of all those goals. And, you know, when I have, when I do, when Josh and I sit down and do his, his performance review, we say, what are we going to work on this year? And we say, staff development. Okay, what does that look like? Well, I want to work with this, this supervisor getting these, I want to identify people within the organization that we can help, you know. So it's a specific goal. And for the goal is, you know, for me, a big goal is turning around how we do our budgeting. It's, it's managing this, this feasibility study, helping Pat with that with the jail, you know, whatever they would be, they'd be specific things. You could just put sentences down of what, you know, what do you think are the three biggest accomplishments we accomplished in the past year, from June twenty-ninth last year to now? And I can easily say, we, we got the Transportation Sales Tax passed through. We worked with the EDA to come up with funding for two housing projects, and potentially now for another development project. I don't do, almost, I don't do almost anything by myself. My responsibility is to facilitate the process.
And you revealed last year was communication, was a flag from all of us, and so now we have a Communication Committee, and we have a Public Information Officer, and we have improved communication and application reports. So, I mean, that right there is your past year.
So I, I would, to answer that question, I would submit a self-evaluation to the group, too, because that's always useful. Then we have a conversation, we summarize, or we present it to the Board. We do the same as we, we present it to the Board, and then we go down the line. We do the same as we present it to the board, and then we go down the line and we ask if there's comments from anybody else. We accept the process and move on.
So, but the board would give their input before the board chair met with?
Yes, they would provide written, everybody would provide written input that would be summarized, and then a summary would come back to a board meeting for a verbal conversation. So we're not trying to take it, we're not trying to put it back. We are trying to make it an administrative function because performance review really is an administrative function. In our organization, it essentially exists to say, "Yep, next anniversary step increase," you know, that happens. If there's disciplinary issues, if there's performance issues, those should be brought up at the time that they're happening. So we want to make sure that we understand that discipline and performance review are separate things. Although, performance review, if there were disciplinary issues, we should go back and say, "Did we address these issues?" We really should summarize the changes since then.
Makes sense. Comments?
Yeah, it's, I don't know if it's appropriate, but one thing that comes to my mind, and it's just... It's part of my campaign, but it's also was a big, big, big thing in the community where I worked as an administrator under teamwork partnering. And I didn't see it anyplace else, maybe it's there and I just didn't catch it. But I think collaboration, not the exact words, but here's where I'm going while I'm getting it. Collaboration with other community agencies to partner on service projects if feasible or when feasible. Example, school district, YMCA, EDA is already part of us, might be the city.
Well, this, I completely understand exactly what you're saying. I think that's addressed in here. And this one, St. Louis County's example, and I stole all this wording, is used for all of their management team.
Okay, so where is it? Collaboration.
Well, it's not, the word is not used, but partnering is that it works effectively with others to achieve goals and resolve problems. I think could specifically mean, especially when you look at my job description, it says your job is to facilitate with these other agencies.
Do we want to add that wording? Just so that it means, because I think this wording feels like it implies inside, and I think what you're talking about is outside of the organization and the community? Or am I just interpreting?
But my comment is, is this wording was used for everybody on our management team. And not everybody on our management team is responsible for all those agencies on the outside.
Right.
So if you just say partnerships or collaboration, in my mind, they say the same thing. And everybody's certainly entitled to interpret them the way that they need to and comment on those issues as they are, but I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that.
It depends to me if there was something in the job description that had something about community partnering or community involvement. If there's something in the job description that says community involvement, maybe there could be something in here that says...
We need a copy of the job description that we hired Jeff for. And then we could always add that under next year's goals. That we would like to see collaboration with Y E A or whatever that is.
I'm surprised we don't already have that, I don't remember. So that's what we need to look at.
Well, I see it in our mission and direction sending where it says, "Secures relevant information." And the only way to get relevant information is to collaborate with other outside agencies. I mean, I see it within the evaluation in every category, but...
So it's implied in every category?
Yes, but some people don't function on implied.
The alternative is, in all honesty, the previous administrator was evaluated on a 20-page matrix, multiple choice answers and fill in the numbers and complete rating systems. And I don't know that that's any more effective.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that I think, you know, being explicit with, you know, it's my issue. And it's not to say anything negative at all, I think you've done well with this. Collaboration with other community agencies to partner on service projects if feasible.
So you want another line that says, "Community collaboration"?
I don't know. I just know the research on management and those that are the most effective collaborate. I know that and I've worked with it and I've seen it.
Well, teamwork is partnering, which could mean collaboration. You could change partnering to collaboration. I'd like to know if anyone else wants to take out the OPSNU and replace it with St. Louis County's symbol MNU?
What?
To get outstanding, proficient, satisfactory, marginal, or unsatisfactory. St. Louis County has needs expectation, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory.
The merit system just uses those three also?
Yes. I mean, I know that when we've done reviews, people get stuck in the OP. Because we're not in high school and it's not A, B, C, D, F.
B, B.
Or more in grad school, you either pass or you don't.
Yeah. That's the only other thing I would like changed on here.
Well, in all honesty, I put the five levels because that's consistent with the current form that we have. And I'm not saying our current form is any...
I know where you put them there.
But for all intents and purposes and getting this done in July, you probably don't want to reinvent this too much.
I think in all honesty, it's up to each of you, have different experience. I could change those words, I could change those headings. But it's going to mean, Commissioner Bertrand, to you what it means to you, and Commissioner Sterling, it's going to mean to you what it means to you. And you're going to have an opportunity, you all have something you want to say about how I'm doing my job, and you should have an opportunity to do that, and I think...
Put it where you want.
This gives, yeah, this gives you an opportunity to put it wherever you want. And then at the end, it says evaluator's comment, so that's pretty wide open.
Yeah.
Well, just to keep it simple, could we have teamwork slash collaboration?
Versus partnering?
I just don't understand partnering.
And I'm the opposite, I don't understand collaboration, but I do get partnering.
I sit in the middle and I see everybody wordsmithing things, and that's exactly it. There is no understanding, words don't mean...
There is no common understanding.
They mean what they mean to you and your contacts, so.
Can we put teamwork, partnering, and collaboration?
I can, I really like to pick some... The reason that I resist changing something that's already being used and working is because it's already being used and working. But I don't have any problem with the last line in there, just...
Then we're all included.
Yeah.
So we don't want to be exclusive.
No. And I think that, like a simple, we can miss color, doesn't it?
Okay, so we'll submit that now. Are we submitting, are we going to send it out to department heads too, or are we just going to send it to commissioners?
I vote for the department heads too.
Is that useful, Josh?
So?
Very good, let's do it that way.
How many of them are there? How many?
A dozen or so, give or take. But everybody's going to get the same expression.
I think that they should be separated though.
Well, they're all going to have their name on them.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if we're going to have a summary, I think we should have a commissioner's summary and then we could have a department's.
I want them to be required to respond.
That's fine, I'll, I think that's good. I think everybody should have to say something, everyone should have to participate. For this process to have meaning throughout the organization, everybody's got to have the same level of participation.
What are the consequences if they don't? We'll just dog them.
I'm sure they have a performance review that talks about teamwork.
Following procedures.
Interpersonal relationships is on their review. Initiative.
Failure to follow instructions is generally considered discom...
Adherence to policy. Dependability, look at all those sections.
Otherwise, it looks good.
Good enough, that will get us through?
I think it's great.
If you have collaboration, I'm happy.
Frank, I'm relieved to have had this conversation because I think there've been just a lot of question marks in our minds and...
Well, last year it came to personnel, and then it went to the county board with approval, and there was none of this discussion at all.
Right.
Because we didn't have a committee of the whole.
Right. This is the beauty of the committee of the whole. Excellent.
Okay, next item. We're going to get out of here by three.
Yes, we are.
Discretionary funding. So this is the next one. And what I'm sending you is the discretionary application that we've used for the past two years. And the last page in this handout, I don't know if it's on the front or the, but the very last page is a summary of last year's final non-mandated letters. So if we go back to the last page, we'll pick up where we ended our conversation this morning.
Could I just review the items that are possibly considered for health and human services? Would be volunteer, maybe legal aid, violence prevention?
Volunteer and legal aid should go under the Attorney's Office.
No.
No?
No. So, yes, we're going to, that's exactly what we're going to do. So I just wanted to review the things above the line. Actually, you should redraw the line underneath Cook County Historical Society. Those are things that we're budgeting for in the regular budget at this point.
Okay.
And then when we get down to the section of the discretionary nonprofit, the 147.6, volunteer attorney, legal aid, I made the same assumption, Heidi. And I talked to Molly, and she says, "We have no reason to necessarily support that." And Josh says, "We put that under public health because if we don't provide that money, those people are going to come back to a human service benefit." So it's almost easier to say... It's almost easier to say that everything except Art Colony, North Shore Music Association, W T I P, and Grand Murray Playhouse...
Not including historical societies?
Gunflint?
No.
Well, Gunflint hasn't gotten any money from us recently, so that's not an issue.
Gunflint's on there because they had a grant that passed through our highway department many moons ago.
Right, so Art Colony through Shorter Historical Society are essentially the arts and culture grants.
Yes. Great.
And everything else fits into some sort of a public health requirement.
Oh, I just love it.
So what I would...
Do we know if the city's going to ask this year? For the Gunflint Hills, they've been zero for the last couple of years, but last year I think they intended to ask but missed the deadline.
They might.
They could. And here's how we handle additional and new requests. If we make a decision, and we can't make a decision today, but we can have a conversation and then make a decision about it soon, so. So that's the summary, that's basically the breakout of thinking that there are certain things that if we don't support, and historically, there are things that we used to actually have staff to provide services, and now we've transitioned those services to other agencies. And the whole conversation about mandated, non-mandated, discretionary has always, has been a confusing topic of conversation since I came here. And everything that's in the public health is not really discretionary or nonprofit or non-mandated. Basically, it's a service that we're contracting, someone else to provide, that if they didn't, we would have to. And if we didn't, then we would have higher costs over here. So they're providing that intervention service, that fence at the top of the cliff to keep these people from needing to use our other human services agency.
Prevention, yep.
So if Birch Grove Foundation comes and says, "We want money the same as everybody else," then we go, "Okay." But what we actually do is we determine at some level, "Okay, what's an appropriate level of block grant funding that we're going to give the human services, the PHHS budget and the Human Services Advisory Board latitude to dole out? We're going to have them make a recommendation." And then we would just summarily approve it with the Health and Human Services budget. Again, because they have the technical ability to evaluate the services that that group provides, we know if we didn't have that, we would spend five times as much over here providing necessary services, or they would have the capacity to evaluate the effectiveness of those programs. And then statutorily, we do have the authority to provide financial support to these arts and culture type functions. And so we would just decide a block grant dollar amount for that. The first year that I came here, we said that we were going to support up to 4% of our levy in support of these discretionary grants. So we would, whatever our decision-making method is, whether it's a dollar amount or a percentage of some other dollar amount that we say, "We're going to make this available because we know that this is important to our community." I even talked about the possibility of having the EDA be responsible for this, but we don't know if we have the ability to transfer our authority to make those grants to that agency. And it's also too short in this timeframe to make that in one step. So Josh and I had an opportunity to sit down and review the application that we've been using for the last couple of years. And there's a whole bunch of stuff in here that we don't need. And this is going back to page one of my handout that I just gave you. And it's actually free of that handout because the first two pages are essentially the title and the claim. And I think we would probably eliminate, we would have some sort of a paragraph describing the process and the timeframe and the objectives and how we're going to do this and what they can expect. And then we would go straight to the page that has the discretionary funding request application. And we would have on here, we would give them five or six categories, or three or four categories. Are they making an appeal? Are they an organization that's providing one of three or four types of public health requests? Are they providing a public service? Or are they making a request based on their nonprofit status as an arts and culture agency in the community? So that we clearly define the kind of application that they're making and we know how to run it. So if they're making a claim that what was proposing to fund with this money serves a public health issue, then we know where it goes. And if they're clearly coming in and saying, "This is an arts and culture activity in the community or an organization in the community, and we're asking for support of that," then we know what initial bucket to put it in. We also know which statutory authority we have to consider their request. If we identify them that way. So there would be something in here that helps us to identify what type of organization they are, what type of funding they're requesting, right at the top. So all this part about, "Is your organization a 501(c)(3)? Is you required to form a 990?" We don't need most of that. Provide a two- to three-sentence summary of what the funding will be used for, that's awesome. That's great, that's perfect. Authorization of their chief appointed official that's designated to apply.
Did I keep any copy with the written marks?
No, I have my marks.
Okay.
You got a copy of my working copy.
And it was copied in color.
Well, I didn't intend to do that, but that probably helps to identify that. So on the next page, budget our actual information? We don't need a whole lot of this. We spent entirely too much time, and we put people through such a process for $3,500.
Exactly.
That's because the past people deciding these fundings needed that information in order to make a decision. But we have a new board now.
So I would streamline this to about two or three pages with a couple of summary paragraphs at the beginning. And then when we get towards the end, we ask them, you know, for the proposal narrative. We don't know, we don't need to know when they were established. We just need to know that they're an authorized organization and they're providing the service they say they're going to provide.
Right.
And then we evaluate.
Before we had this, we just had them give us a one-page summary, top sheet, and their financial statements. For most of them.
Basically, prior to this.
I'm sorry, but when you handed this out, I almost wanted to throw up what you handed it to me. So if you just completely trash it, I'm okay with it. If we just get rid of that and go back to the simple...
This came from a much larger organization.
Yes, the Minnesota Grant.
So I mean, there are some key pieces that we need to have in here. And what I'm suggesting is that if you think we're on the right track in coming up with a different way of handling these budgeted line items, then I'm asking you to just say, "Yeah, I think we're on the right track." And we'll come up with a new application, we'll come up with a new process. The new application will have the summary of how this will be handled. We'll have Brady verify that we're in compliance. We'll have Brady verify that we're in compliance and have the authority to do what we say we wanna do. We're gonna have a conversation at the next Health and Human Services Advisory meeting so that we can talk to them about, "Are you guys okay taking this money and vetting these requests and being the ones that are responsible for saying that?" You know, it's not an easy thing, but I think that they do have the capacity to do that.
Community Ed briefly discussed this at the last meeting, whether or not this was something that we as a board could take on.
And we have to find out if we have the authority to do that. Honestly, if we get our actual discretionary grants for arts and culture down to 30,000 or 40,000 or even 50,000, whatever the number is, then we have to put that in the proper context. How much time do we spend on a $30,000 budget item versus a $3 million budget item?
It's a classic example of good intentions and unintended consequences. I mean, I sat through that thing and, you know...
You missed the interview process, which is even more.
I mean, it's just not good policy, and it's not good use of our time. That's why we have staff. We should be overseeing the big picture, like I say, in AMC. We should be flying at 5,000 feet.
Some counties get a page like this of their budget with all their departments on it, and they approve it. They don't get the bullet that we get.
You can get as much information as you want or as little information as you want. It's your responsibility to feel that you've got enough information to make good decisions.
I think we have to have enough information to look at the service model or support.
So I won't beat this to death. If you're okay with this, we'll take it to the Health and Human Services Advisory Board. I'm gonna get a draft of this out once Brady says that that meets our requirements, everybody's agreeable with that, then I kinda gotta get this out.
Yep.
So once we've got a draft that we think we're good with, I'll get it out to you all so you can look at it. But we kinda gotta get this on their agenda because the people on this list, who'd be either indifferent or kinda counting on some money from this year.
Could we form a committee to do this, and I will not be on it?
Committing to do what?
Are we gonna have someone look at these?
We'll talk about it.
Non-health and her human services.
So I do have a suggestion, though, when you type this up, put Birch Grove Education. They no longer have a foundation, so that's what they're discussing.
Isn't it Birch Grove Education, Birch Grove School Recreation?
That's different.
So now in addition to Birch Grove School Recreation, they're gonna have Birch Grove Education?
Instead of foundation. They no longer have a foundation.
Right. But I need clarification because community ed is recreation, and we can fund recreation. But I don't know that we can fund just straight education. Brady will have to check into that.
They're just changing their title.
Yeah, it's just a title change.
Just a title.
Okay.
If that's what we're doing, schools, we're funding the recreation.
To confuse us even more.
They're trying to find the least objectionable term that they can use.
Yeah. But they're doing great work. Until they come up with another title, that's what they are.
Are there two organizations now?
They're too different.
So Birch Grove School and Birch Grove Education are different.
Well, this is what they're debating tomorrow night, which I won't be on, but yeah. It's very complicated.
Well, in all honesty, the list for next year will be the list, will be a list of whatever they provide us.
Right.
So whatever they put on an application is what we'll make the list for next year.
They'll know by July 1st.
Well, they're not gonna have this before then, much before then.
Okay. Good to go. Good to move on?
Okay. Why does that feel like such a relief already?
I know. But it really is. It's really a huge simplification.
Thanks, Josh, for taking it on that.
Yeah.
So pass out the next one, the last packet for the day.
Great. Thanks for not passing them all out at once, because we've been like, not paying attention.
Now you know why Michaela and Tim and everybody else was standing there wondering when I was gonna be done with the copy.
Yes. Someday soon.
So this two-page summary is Valerie's take after several conversations with me and a couple of conversations that included Brady about some of the challenges that we have with our budget that are unresolved. And so this is messaging to you as a group, this is messaging to our employees as a group, and this is messaging to the public. And one of the things that we're gonna be doing is taking some of these messages and putting them into a video like you were starting, not like that one, but Anopka County has one that explains their budget process and how they determine priorities and how they determine which funding mechanisms they use to fund which types of expenditures within their organization. That's great. That's part of why we're having elders come in and help us do a study is... This thing's very distracting.
It's there.
The sheriff pops up and says, "I need to talk to you." I'm like, "Oh, no, you wanna go?"
Put it on there then, in his car with a one.
Yeah, "I need to talk to you." So what we're trying to do is get our messaging down, but what we also really need to do and what we have to talk about is, are we at the point where as a board, you're ready to give us direction as far as a goal? And we need to provide you enough information of what we think we need, or you can tell us, no, you have to, you know... I give the analogy that the coordinator up in Koochin County at the last meeting that we went to down in Silver Bay, she said, "You know, several, 20 years ago, we made this decision about what is gonna be in our budget, how many staff we're gonna have, what services we're gonna provide, and then every year since then, it's been a very simple process. We have an incremental expense that's just enough to cover the cost of living, and it takes care of this, and it takes care of that, and they've had a very easy process." But 25 years ago, they went, they were sitting where we're sitting now. They're sitting with the fact, we're sitting with the fact that we haven't balanced the budget. We haven't addressed our resources versus our expenditures. So I kinda wanna run through this because I wanna test your thinking about these words and these messages, because this is gonna turn into our messaging that goes out to the public, and it's gonna run alongside with our budgeting process, with their department hats, with the budget committee, and then the media messages that we get out there and then take in the information that we're getting from elders to help us, we need to give them direction to say, "Okay, here's where we wanna point, help us get there." So we've talked about the budget being the most important policy decision that the board makes every year. I think that's what we set that up at. As we head into the '28 budget discussion, we have the same problem as 2017, an unbalanced budget. We didn't dodge a bullet by ending up at 11 rather than 19. We prolonged the problem, we're still digging the hole, and unfortunately, now it all comes with a 2018 price tag. So at some of the community meetings that I've been to, I've heard people say, "You said last year, if we don't go 19%, you're gonna have to cut staff. We went to 11%, we didn't cut any staff." But we've had a conversation about what did we just not pay for in 2017 that we're going to have to pay for in 2018 or later? You know, hey, we have to pay for half of this year's greater next year. If we wanna put calcium chloride back in the budget, we have to put that back in the budget. If we still have the greater from 2016, then we have three years worth of payments left on. So we have 350 and 140, so 490, and then some other things that we put in there. So we got $550,000 worth of deferred capital that we have to pay for in 2018 that's just looking at us. And then we have the assumptions of staff increases and healthcare, staff wage increases and healthcare, and the general cost of living on the $10 million of our budget that's not staff and benefits. And I've got those assumptions in here, too, and they haven't changed. It's the same one that I showed you. It's not easy to accept. We don't wanna see double-digit levy increases. It's the reality until we balance it. So the levy history is chart number one, is page number three in here, and you're all familiar with this. This was published in the paper last fall. This one is current up to and including 2017. So our budgeted expenditures are not out of control. On average, they've gone up 3.1% annually for 28 years. And our levy's not out of control. On average, it's gone up 4.3% annually. So when people in the community are saying, "How come we've got increases more than 3% or 4%?" We don't when we look at them over a period of time. The problem is, is we didn't have a plan to do it over a period of time. You can see the reactionary nature of the levies that they were set.
And we have a bit of a reactionary assessment since we've been, because of the requirement to reassess over those five years, so a lot of people are gonna hit with that.
Still catching up.
So the assessment is a secondary issue, yes. Some people's valuation hadn't been touched in a long time. And even if we'd only had a 2% increase that year, some people would've seen the 300% increase. Here, I almost wanna interject with the story I've shared with a couple of you. I was at my parents' house this weekend, the Rayner Dispatch came out, and on the front page was a headline that says, "County Taxes to Double in Unorganized Territories." That's the headline. And then the story is all about how they had this public meeting, and everybody showed up with their pitchforks and fires, and they had to shut it down, and they just apologized, and they said, "We didn't get our notices out in time. We didn't anticipate this many people. We're sorry, we'll come back and we'll have another meeting." And then you get to the back, page A10, not the first page. This is why we have a communications team and we're managing our messages. The headline should have read, "County Funding for Roads in Unorganized Territory: Significant Challenge in That." And then they should've said that funding for road maintenance is insufficient, and we're gonna run into deficit spending if we don't make some significant changes. Their proposal was 12% to 18% increase in these unorganized territories annually for three to four years, and then drop down to 5% to 7% increases for the next five years after that. So at the point in time, over a 10-year period, their property taxes would double, on average, from $183 to $379. So get the scope and the context of this. Over a 10-year period, their taxes would go up by $12 a month on average. That is not the end of the world, but that is letting, that is not managing the message. That is not being upfront, and I gotta call Tim Hoole and say, "Tim, how'd that one go?" But that's an exact example of not managing the numbers. When we look at the numbers and we look at it, we say, "Spending is not out of control." And the levy is not out of control. And in all honesty, if we've been diligent about it, and here's the example again, if we would've had consistently levied a 4.3% increase over the same period of time, instead of $125 million, we would've collected $152, we'd have $27 million extra, and we would just build a law enforcement center and pay cash.
Wow. That's the...
That's exactly the power of planning, and that's why we'd ask elders to come in and help us set up for success over the next 10 to 15 to 20 years. Is if we make some decisions now and have a plan and stick to it, then 25 years from now, we'll be in this column, we'll have been consistent, people will understand what to accept, expect from us. And that's providing good government, being predictable, being responsible, understanding what our responsibilities are, knowing how we're gonna pay for it, and explaining to people why we're doing that and how that benefits them.
This is the answer to the question of, "Why do we have an administrator?" Because we didn't have an administrator and we didn't have a plan. And you just look at it, you can just go back to 2010. We used $853,000 of the fund balance.
Budgeted use.
Budgeted use. Budgeted use in '11 was another $700,000 to get the levy at zero. And I remember commissioners during that meeting saying, "This is irresponsible."
The question I would ask if I was a taxpayer is, "What the hell did you do with that money? Because that was my money staying in the bank, and now it's not there anymore, and what did you do with it?"
Yeah.
So the next paragraph, "There's also demand for maintenance of service levels." So we're talking about the services we provide and the service levels, amenities that contribute to quality of life, Health and Human Services. You know, we have incrementally added staff because we know we need to. We understand that we need to. How do we do, how do we manage this problem without cutting out vital services? And how do we address an unbalanced budget? The problem is, is we've really just run out of opportunities to dodge this. I can go back and look five or six years and see that every year when we started the process, when the department heads' initial request came in, the number was in the I-20 somewhere, and we found a way to buy it down by using fund balance, by deferring payments, by putting something up. We've always found a way to do it, and we've just really run out of opportunities to dodge this situation.
Stop changing the tires on the car. We stopped doing oil changes. We stopped doing the transmission flush, and now here the car sits with flat tires and an empty engine.
Well, and we stopped paying our credit card debt every month.
So when we look... The Cook County's financial position is unique, that we have significant reliance on state and federal funds. If you look at page five in here, you can see the summary numbers of our revenues for So we get 17% of our revenues come from federal grants. So in all honesty, when people say we've only got 9% of the county that's privately owned, that's paying taxes, it's really, really, really misleading, because the federal government is paying their share. They really are. And it's also really misleading because our tax levy rate is really low on the privately-owned parcels. So it's, that conversation doesn't have any bearing on the situation.
Let's not put any responsibility in the right pot to manage.
We've also had people ask us if we can stop taking the state and federal money and do what we want, and we actually have enough room in our levy to no longer take state and federal money and do what we want. Or less reports for YAPPA.
If we funded this $18.64 million expenditure budget, all with levy, then our net effective tax rate would be equal to the state average net effective tax rate.
Wow.
It wouldn't be above, it would just be equal to.
Wow.
But in all honesty, we can't provide many of the services we're required to provide without taking the money, because we're required to take the money, we're required to do that. We wouldn't wanna not do that. But there are times, we had a conversation this morning, where we're not gonna take those funds. And then they come back and they say, "Okay, we can do them this way," and then there's less restriction on the use of them and less requirement of reporting. Tim was in this morning talking about the buffer management, and their preliminary proposal was too onerous, we didn't wanna do it. Now they're saying, "Hey, here's block money, here's some minimal requirements. We really do want you to do this, because we don't have the resources to put to it." So the balance between state and local payment of these services has always been in flux. Calling them unfunded mandates is really, it's really kinda silly, because counties were created to provide services, and the balance of state money versus local money has just always gone back and forth. Minnesota's kinda crazy, right? We've always, if you have a Democratic government or you have a Republican House, Minnesotans just love there to be tension down there in St. Paul. As long as I can remember, there's always been tension down there, and it's worked relatively well up until recently. Maybe it's still working, I don't know. But that's, you know, that's the interesting thing. So when Jay asked me on the radio, he said, "When do we get back to 3% to 4% increases in our levy?" I said, "I don't know that we ever can, Jay." And the problem is, is that we pay about 50% of our way through levy and charges for services and other miscellaneous things, and the other 50% is coming from agencies that we don't have, we can't control. So if our costs on the whole budget go up 3%, and the state and federal frees theirs, right, our share of 3% is now 6%, because we've gotta pick up the whole 3% based on the amount we control by the levy. So people who have a smaller increase, A, they either have way bigger numbers to work with, so they've got some room, they've got some flexibility, they're doing things with financing, or their budget is significantly 60, 70, 80% on their levy already, on a number they control, and less having to do with the grants that are coming in from state and federal agencies.
And I think, don't you think sometimes the grants better fit some of the bigger counties? I mean, that's where they come from. That's how their design necessarily fits us, or they're...
Right.
Some of those maybe aren't causing as big increases as that's here. And how many of those programs? And how many of those programs start with funding that substantially covers it? And then, kind of with the plan, that then that will go down and then we'll take care of it after that. We've seen a lot of that.
So what I anticipate putting in here is a chart, a colored chart that basically shows local, state, and federal in a wheel. It just shows the share of the dollars that comes in there.
Like YAPPA did this morning.
Like YAPPA's this morning. The Health and Human Services is 42% local and 40% state. And this much from other agencies. Well, let's really, if we don't have control over this, this is the only, this is why it affects us more.
Then page two, can that be a circle that shows how much of that money goes to each section? Like how much is road and bridge? How much is public health?
Oh, so you want to go to page four? And they're out of order, but they think it's easier to talk about revenues first. So page four is a summary on the left of all of our fund numbers.
This is what other counties pass.
Yep.
This page.
So this is a summary of our fund numbers for 2017. I'm just using the current numbers. And I broke them up into, over on the right-hand side, the short version. If you look at the State Auditor's Report of the summary budgets for the counties in the state of Minnesota, there's our summary budget of what we're spending our money on. 21% on general funds, 16% on public safety, 30% on streets and highways, 19% on human services. Again, you show that in a chart. And then you just, you break down the general because people say, "What's in general?" Well, all of our agencies that are required, the auditor's office, the assessor's office, the recorder's office, the commissioner's administration. And by the time you break that out, you go home.
What is building?
Building?
Is that what we spend on upkeep on all of our buildings?
Which number? Oh, the building, the 477?
Yeah. That is disgusting.
Do you know what the number should be?
447.
I'm assuming we have about $120 million worth of plans. So we should probably be budgeting about 10 to 15% of that number annually, or at least have that available in cash. At a very high level, one of the things that Bruce is going to do from our financial capital planning is he's going to do a very high-level estimation based on the number of buildings and the number of square feet, what our capital plant value is, and what our annual planning for that should be. And then he's going to give us an opportunity to ramp into that over a period of time.
Got a question, just the YMCA, 768,257. That's not our cost.
No, that is...
This is a revenue side. This isn't including their membership. We're showing everything in our budget, all expenses. Membership is on the revenue side. It offsets us. Our net is 110.
So our accounting to this point...
So I didn't realize that we accounted for that on the county side. I thought that was done through the delutary YMCA.
The financial agreement we had with them up until this year was that we were on the hook for X percent of the overrun. So we showed the revenues and the expenditures. And we showed the net of the $110,000 that we were budgeted, the $120,000 that we were budgeted within that. So this year, in all honesty, maybe not this year, but next year.
Next year.
We don't have to show that. We just have to show our expenditures related to maintenance.
Yes, that's why...
Of the YMCA in the maintenance budget.
So is this, this is 2017?
That's 2017.
I'm sorry.
I started...
I thought that was corrected, but it's not corrected till next year.
Yes. So in 2017, we started the year showing that because that's where our arrangement is.
I just, okay, thank you. Now I understand it.
So for next year, our budgeted line item for maintenance, for Brian's responsibility, we'll have a sub-line for YMCA. That'll be around that $255,000 cost offset by our arrangement with the city to provide some revenues back. So in a way, it's going to help us because that $700,000 that we're showing is expense. Isn't going to be shown on the 18 budget.
And so, you know, one of the things, there's a lot of misunderstandings in the community. And I think this is why I like to raise this issue, is how we present information is important because it can be very misleading. Because some people say, "Oh, no." And I've talked to people about this. "What do you mean? We're spending $700,000 or some thousand dollars in life?" No.
We'll go back to the point that we were spending upwards, almost $100,000 a year supporting the old city pool.
Yeah.
No.
And now we're budgeting for $145,000.
The city was putting in a lot more.
Yes.
So between the city and the county, the taxpayers were paying more to support that than they are to support this.
It's just misleading to have it here. I'm glad we're correcting that.
Yep. Good catch. Yeah, that'll go away. So we won't have to represent that.
The other one is that, well, you told us that you wouldn't have to pay anything for it. That was never, ever, ever heard of discussion. We would not have had a contract with the city to pay for half of it if their plan was not to have any.
Right.
We're just getting a whole lot more for about the same amount of money.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
But, you know, people are paying for it too.
Oh, the economic impact of that facility versus the economic impact to the pool, we're not even beginning to measure that. We're just talking about the level of service provided.
Okay, thank you.
So you would take this little section and make it into a pie chart?
Yep. So we would have one of our sources of revenues that showed state, federal, and local. And then we would, we'd probably break local into taxes versus other local sources, meaning fees for services, you know, financing miscellaneous, other revenues. But we would really want to highlight the tax portion of it. And the tax portion of it is, the portion we have control over is small compared to the whole thing. And then the summary budget for the expenditures, yeah, you would show that and simply say, "We're, we spend this much on public safety, this much on human services, and this much on road and bridge." And then there's only this much that's, somehow, somebody just sent an email. Apparently, Pat Strand and I are taking mileage money that we're not paying out to the volunteers and we're splitting it.
Okay.
I just got an email.
Just between the two of you?
Just between the two of us. Apparently, Pat and I have some sort of a deal where we're splitting that money. I wasn't even aware, which means she's probably keeping it all.
That's what I think. Somebody's on the ball, huh? We're thinking we are.
So...
She thanked him for giving you an idea of how to make the money. She had love and good.
So we can get to a place of stability. This requires tough decisions. This is the same conversation we have. We need to get to a balanced budget. And if we do that, we can get to a new normal, hopefully of 5% to 7% levy increases because it's not the old normal. We anticipate. Now, we asked the question about what are we doing related to healthcare? We're doing everything we can to manage those costs. And we're going to put everything on the table this year. And we honestly have staff coming to the table saying, "We know we need to have this conversation."
Can we not use psychological terms in that sentence, like stability and normal?
Normal is not a psychological term.
Somebody's going to...
Normal is standing on a dishwasher.
Too close to home.
All it is is a standard deviation of 66 and 2/3%.
So at some point, we're going to ask you as a group to give us recommendations. And this will be our conversation at the next budget meeting. Which is why I don't know that we actually need Lisa at the next budget meeting. Because I don't know that we need to talk about department level. We could. Because if we're talking about philosophy for funding that department, we could have that conversation.
So you want us to answer page seven?
What's that?
You want us to answer page seven?
So, a three-year...
You can't answer yet.
So we have, we have one option. We've added the staff that we've added recently as a result of identifying and assessing individual needs. But we haven't created a budget that supports the changes that we've made. And based on those assumptions, we're looking squarely at a 20% or 25% increase again this year. And when I, when I look at page, page six, and we look at the assumptions that we've talked about for 2018, 2019, and 2020, 2.5% assumption for salary increases, benefits at 10%. I don't know what that's, over the course of three years, I think we can get to a number that looks like that. General operational increases, that's 3% on the $10 million. That's not wages and benefits in our budget. Highway deferred capital and calcium chloride in 2018, you can see those numbers. Fund balance, we're at that point, if we've at the point where we got the fund balance as low as we dare go with it and our expenses go up, that means if that's going to remain a percent of our expenditure budget, then we need to start putting money back into the piggy bank instead of taking it out. So the assumption of 3% is based on expenditures going up at 3%. Now, we're going to get better information about our returns and about how we did and where we come in at the end of the year. And Health and Human Services did well. So we've got lots of moving numbers here, but you've got to throw a number out there.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
He gets the award for the double-sided puny number. Now I'm going to need a therapist, Brian.
This is regarding fund balance. This is a statewide comparison. It's a little misleading, but it's the latest one that they have. But they do it in different ways. This chart shows with the lowest percent of fund balance, Fairbowl County. And then we're pretty low on that scale. I mean, we're at 41%, but that's... 13, 14. So we're 15th lowest, which is a little misleading because this was the year that our BWCA money came in late from the federal government. It's not in here. And it will be in there in 2016. We changed our policy to recognize revenues later, so it shouldn't happen again. We'd still be in the 50s, which is closer to midway. But when I got here 25 years ago, we were in the class on this back page. We were there with the Lake of the Woods and the Amawers and the Lake Counties. So that's what's, that's what's happened to us in the years.
What's recommended?
The recommendation is, it's anywhere from, you know, 35% to 50% from the state auditor. But they don't have a hard recommendation. And that's just a minimum. That's a cash recommendation. Like everything goes down, you need this amount of cash flow to run for three to six months until your other money comes in. I don't think that they're trying to actually describe the best way for you to operate. They're telling you what's your minimum. You need that much. If government shuts down, if things happen, you need three to six months. But I think, you know, best practices would be higher than that. As you can see, as other counties are doing. Our best practices should be much higher than we are right now. Look at Lake County, oh, they're struggling with that.
I haven't even heard of that 125% before.
With that internet project, but they're not in crisis because they have this fund balance. Otherwise, they could be in very deep difficulties managing something like that. But they have this as a backup.
And I would assume that's why they took on that internet project is because they did have such a big fund balance.
Well, it gives you some comfort.
And maybe false positives.
There's another reason, that's a great comparison, this last column on the end that shows the percent of fund balance. But the next column in, the total current expenditures, is another really good contextual point.
Right, right, right.
To understand the size of the organizations. And when I talk about Anoka County, Anoka County has a total current expenditures of 223 million dollars. So they have financing options available to them that we can't even think about because we're not playing the same game. Hennepin County, look at that, 1.2 billion. It's a big flipping number.
They can manage with a much lower percent.
Yeah, because they have more money.
Well, yeah, and that's why the whole idea of percent increases per year as a comparable, it's a crazy, it's no context.
We're so dependent on those, again, like I just said earlier, on those other sources of revenue that we can have wild swings. And that's where we need more protection.
You'd expect the rural, the smaller counties to be the largest of the, an inverse thing here going on.
But look at this one down here, Lake, Dakota County has 112% fund balance of $253 million fund.
That's an amazing, that's an amazing one there.
That's like $275 million is just sitting there.
And they're one of the counties that did the video.
That's why they can do clever videos.
Because of that? Or at that point, are you above the point of making a difference really?
What do they need the bond for?
I'm not saying, would it matter?
Lake of the Woods has that high too.
So, so assuming the assumptions on page six are in the ballpark, that says that over the next three years, we need $3.7 million of new revenue. And I'm making the assumption that our opportunity for that is that has to come from left. And page seven shows two ways that we can get there. Now, these are just preliminary, basic assumptions. But we need to try to identify the scope of the decisions or the recommendations or the, of the direction that we need from the board so that when LERS does their financial analysis, they give us options that put us into something that we agree is the level of service that we need to provide in this community. So our conversation here is about the level of service that we need to provide. And you can see, we can get under 10% faster. If we assume that we, the number of staff that we have and the level of service that we're providing is what we need, is the commitment we need to make in this community. And there's the conversation. People can debate the dollars, but we have to have the conversation about the level of service and the commitment that we make to this community. And what does, what does that look like? Every time Sue or Josh had come and said, "Things change at the state," or "We just don't have the staff to manage the caseload." We've identified it. We've looked at it. We've said, "Yeah, that makes sense. We see it." But we've never identified funding for it.
Right, never getting up to speed with the Health and Human Services.
So we need, we need to own that. And this is, this is a way for us to have a strategy to do that.
In fact, it's not even a need to own it. It's, we have to own it.
We do own it.
We do own it.
We need to decide if we're going to keep it or sell it.
Well, we run out of hiders.
Okay, these figures on the back, you know, what are the assumptions in regards to like calcium chloride?
When I, so, that's a very good question. On page, on page seven?
I'm sorry.
Are you looking at, yes. No, you're looking at page seven. So on page seven, I'm assuming all the assumptions on page six we're going to budget for.
Which means putting calcium?
I'm making the assumption that we're going to put calcium chloride back in to some degree that we have.
And I think we should.
And so the assumptions on page six are demonstrating the $3.7 million of new revenue over three years. And the calculations on page seven show two different possibilities of getting there. Taking it off in one big chunk and getting smaller quickly. Or just saying, "Okay," I can't remember who it was, but I said we needed 20% increase. And somebody, it was at the curling ring, somebody at the curling ring had said, "Why can't you just do 5% a year for four years?" And I'm like, I really, I honestly, I understand what you're saying, but money doesn't work that way. But we can get to 20% by going 15, 14, 13, because that's how money works.
Yeah.
Or we could go 20, 13, 9. And again, there's, the assumptions on six are the only ones that I've accounted for. There are things, everything that Josh is going to put in his line item budget for this year is not covered in the assumptions on six.
Highway deferred capitals, 400,000 in 18 and not mentioned elsewhere.
I'm assuming that we would just pay those balances off. We could...
Three years ago was the first time that we deferred them.
Three years ago?
Commissioner, that's the wiggle room I'm leaving me because I know he's going to come with a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then we have the opportunity to take that $400,000 and put it over here in a capital bond. And take it off so that we can still accommodate this and cover it.
Good.
I will share with you exactly what I'm thinking about those things. But one of the things that we've done intentionally or unintentionally is we've cut all the fat out of our, we've cut all the fat, meaning we've cut all of the capacity and all the resiliency out of this organization.
That's a really good word for it.
So last year, when we needed a new camera system at the law enforcement center, it took board action to provide a $100,000 piece of capital equipment that we should have, we should be, we budget for computers. We budget for copiers. We budget for all those things that we know have life cycles. Those camera systems have a similar life cycle, five to seven years. You should be replacing it. And that should be showing up in a capital budget for each of the... And that should be showing up in a capital budget for each of the major budget line items, and then for Brian's line item. But instead, we're showing fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Like Trudy said to me, he goes, "So the law enforcement building needs windows and a roof." He goes, "When you built it twenty years ago, why didn't you set aside capital for it?" And I said, "Well, twenty years ago, they probably did, and as boards change, the board said, 'No, we don't wanna budget for it, because we need the money somewhere else,'" and took it out. I'm like...
Well, that was the presentation about the YMCA last year from Nancy Schultz. She said, "You've got a very brand-new building here, but you know you've got needs coming down the line. You budget twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year to put in the replacement budget, and then when you need to replace your air handler, you have the cash to do it."
Right.
But until, honestly, until we balance...
It's a mature, mature, mature community.
Until we solve the basic problem, which means let's budget to cover the services, we need to balance our services and our support, then we can, then we can start leveraging and creating room for and building capacity to take care of our infrastructure. But I've really been pushing hard for us to have to balance the basic budgeting question. What's the right, what's the right level of service? How big does this organization need to be to provide that level of service? How are we gonna cover those expenses? And then let's build the capacity for these other things.
So is the budget committee gonna review page six and make decisions on the budget, or is that still gonna come to the entire board to make decisions on big-ticket items?
We're talking about strategies, we're talking about messaging, we're talking about, we're gonna talk a little bit about land services. How do we, how do we show the new Parks and Trails Department, and what's our strategy, and how do we wanna show that? But a lot of this messaging, a lot of this stuff, we're gonna take right straight to the next budgeting meeting, and I need comments and feedback, and we'll bring Valerie in. And the biggest thing we gotta do now is we gotta identify, what direction are we going in? And then let's get our data together, and let's have our messaging, so that what we need out of a process this year is we need a goal from this board. We need to work towards that goal. We need to take into account the study that we're gonna have LRS do for us. And then we need to go to our preliminary levy hearing and say, "This is what, this is what we're doing, and we're doing it in support of this level of service and these programs, and this, and this, and this is why we're doing it. And this is the value to you, and this is the cost to you." We've always been really good at showing, you know, if we need a twenty percent increase, mine'll go up from twelve hundred dollars to two-hundred-and-forty more than that, right?
Yeah, yep.
That's, that's, that's my, that's the impact on the median house in Cook County, because right now we're at the median value.
Yeah.
So the median impact for, and again, we're only responsible for the county line, my taxes are double that, but I pay half of them to the city, some to the school.
Just because we're responsible, as we will get blamed for the rest of it.
But that's the message we gotta manage, is we gotta say, "Okay, this is why we're doing this, this is what you get."
Yep.
You know, the whole thing out in the, in the social media thing is just driving me crazy, is why should I pay for somebody else? And the answer is organized decent society.
Yeah.
We pay because we value everybody in the community.
And because it's one vote.
And some people need help now, and some people need help then.
Well, the other part that we get stuck in the mud is the conversation last year, people can't afford it. Well, who and where are these people? And let's say there's two-hundred people in this community that can't afford an increase. Well, there's four-thousand-eight-hundred that can and are willing to. I mean, I had people call me and say, "Heidi, please raise my taxes, because I wanna help out. Please don't cut public health, please don't cut this. Can you just charge me more individually on my taxes?" I had that, and that, and last year wasn't the first time I had that conversation. Many decisions we make, when we say, "We just can't afford this," I've had people call me and say, "Make it work, I'll pay more, my neighbors will pay more."
We can't budget to the lowest common denominator, because most people who live here don't wanna live in poverty.
No, that trades poverty.
Budgeting to the lowest common denominator creates poverty.
Exactly.
And we have systems in place to make sure that those figure of two-hundred people don't have to...
Not just us, the state has a refund program.
So we have ways to make sure that those two-hundred or three-hundred or whatever at the bottom don't have to absorb all that.
Yeah, and there are ways to, there are lots of ways.
We have lost so much money.
Yeah, but, but we can take care of the low, the low, there's, there's tax relief. And we even talked about that during our budget discussions at the end of the year. It's like, we went below it. It's like, why would we go below it?
So for this process to have integrity, we need to set a goal soon. And I would hope at some time in July, that we provide enough information so the budget committee can say that, yeah, this is where we gotta go, and the committee and the whole can take a look at it, and the board can say, "Our goal is Jeff Brady, come up with a budget that gets us here." And really, we should, we should change our numbers. The budget should be, we're budgeting for an expenditure budget of twenty-point-two million dollars, levy this, and the incidental number is the percent of increase. We've spent way too much time concentrating on the percent of increase and the levy as the way that we measure it. And I get it, because that's gonna be the conversation even Thursday morning, when we're doing our committee updates, people are already gonna start talking about what their goals are.
Right.
And the goal shouldn't be, "What's our percent levy increase?" The goal should be, "How are we managing our overall budget? What are we doing?
Yeah.
What's effective, what's not effective?"
Yeah.
And it should be about the expenditure budget, and the revenues, and the fact that levy is the one thing that we really have control over, and here's what the number's gonna take to solve the puzzle. When I was budgeting for cities, that's, I simply laid out the revenues, the expenditures, our debt service, our enterprise funds, and I took out the levy number completely, and I got down to the bottom. And basically, you got down to the bottom and you had a negative number. That's the number you had to turn around and put up in here in your levy to solve for zero. And that's how you solve for zero. And then you test those theories and hypotheses. Brady and his staff do a really good job of testing for zero and calculating the numbers and coming up with the assumptions. We just have to provide him the guidance to say, "This is what it looks like." Josh and I are here to say, "I don't, I don't know that we can do without any of the services that we have. I don't, I don't think we can provide the leadership in this community and the response, take care of the responsibilities we have to take care of without the staff that we have."
I know last year, people said, "You have to lower the levy," and I said, "Well, services, are you willing to give up?" And not a one of them had a service they were willing to give up, even when I gave them options. Most of the people answered, "Well, that's your job."
Well, and I, and I'll represent that we don't have an option. If we're gonna support the level of service, then we really have to solve, we have to solve the revenue problem.
Well, we've already reviewed, at least in my department, the only non-mandated services I have are probably two of the services that actually save us the most amount of money, versus the mandated services that we're required to provide, so there's no savings in, you know, if I took out a non-mandated service, which is, that's only the two positions that we have, it's gonna increase the amount of work that we have in the social work of positions that would cost us more money, so.
So, so a process that, what we did last year really, really undermined the integrity of this organization's ability to do work. So what we need is, we need to set a goal. We need to take that goal through to the preliminary levy in September, and we set a levy based on the best information we have and the direction provided by you, which is based on the information we've given you. And then, anything that happens between September and December really has to be a result, it can't be a result of outside pressure. It really has to be a result of our ability to refine the numbers and the assumptions that we're making. So between September and December, we're continuing to refine our contracts with our staff, and we're budgeting for this, but it turns out to be this, so we can refine some numbers. We anticipate this in healthcare, but it turns out to be this, so we refine numbers. We look at what we anticipate for interest on our, on our earnings, and we say, "Well, we thought it was gonna be this, but this is this," so we refine our numbers. So if we set nineteen-point-nine in September, and we find out, we shouldn't say, whatever we set in September should be what we're willing to support, because that's the level of service and the budget and what we need to do as an organization. Any refinement should come from the refinement of our numbers. So what I'm asking is, is direction should be specifically, what are we willing to do? What do we know, what do we need to do? And then the process needs to continue through that. And anything that happens in December is a result of us doing our jobs and saying, "You know what, we negotiated a little better over here, and we decided we don't need to spend this money." Or, "We got better returns over here, and revenue assumptions change." Or, "Land Services comes in and says, 'Hey, you know what, we think we can sell some of this tax forfeited stuff.'" Or, "Rena comes in and says, 'The towers, we just signed a contract, and we know we got fifty thousand dollars of annual income that we didn't expect, and now here it is.'" So we make those minor adjustments. But really, the, the direction and the guidance that we get from you in the rest of June and July is what we need to put into September, and then we need to be willing to carry that. So that has to be based on our assumptions about service levels.
Are you looking at, then, three different videos for education to the public? The history, the expense, and the levy?
No, I think we're talking about one or two videos. But we would be talking about, basically, what, what the one, the Anoka County one did. If you look, if you have the ability to look on YouTube and search for Anoka County budget video, you'll see a pretty good video. And they talk about the assumptions they make and the process they go through, and what you get for your dollar. So if I were to look at what you get for your dollar, you go over here to the expense side, and you'd say, "Thirty cents on every dollar is spent on streets and highways. Nineteen cents on every dollar is spent on human services. Sixteen percent is spent on public safety."
Love it.
Well, if we can provide a visual that makes sense, then people will go, "Okay." And again, our target audience is not the people who don't wanna pay taxes or are low detractors. Our target audience are the eighty percent of the people who are paying their taxes, going to work, raising their families, and they just don't have enough information about what we do.
Right, right. To feel confident in what we do.
The crazy thing about the good old days that everybody keeps telling me, is one of the basic, basic premises of the good old days is everybody that paid taxes was proud of the taxes they paid.
Yeah.
It was a reflection of the community they lived in. And that's, we have hope to do that at the local level. But we need to give people enough, we need to give that people in the middle the ability to say, you know, "I value this. I wouldn't wanna give, I wanna know that when I call 911, that somebody's coming."
Right.
"I hope I never have to call 911. I'm willing to pay so that somebody else who needs it has it." That's, that's part of the, the old social contract, and somehow or another, we need a new social contract.
Yeah, and I don't know that the social contract here was ever that way. I don't know.
You know, here there is a very unique thing, because, because two generations ago, this place was really frontier, and people were really independent, and people were really okay with the fact that, "Hey, I've gotta take care of myself, because nobody else is coming to do that." But that's not who, that's not reflection of who our population is anymore.
Exactly. And that's really what we're fighting, is that.
And that is, and that's, that's why we're seeing an increase in abandoned services, is because now we're really, we look a lot more like the rest of the group.
Exactly.
We look a lot more like the rest of the state of Minnesota, and there's still some people out there, you know, "Don't bring your cell phones into my business, don't wanna see them."
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's not realistic.
It's so not realistic. I know my staff tried that late nineties, and I, it's like, "Are you kidding? A little sign on the door, no cell phones allowed." I just thought, huh, might as well just put death or closed or, you know.
Put a message that says closed, it's coming soon.
Yeah, yes. Could you review the date that you, have you set a date for Ayers to come?
They're working in the background at this point in time, and I will try to get ahold of him and ask that question, and have that information for our budget committee, which is scheduled for...
They're working on it.
Next week.
Because we're getting some information.
Okay.
Next Friday.
Next Friday, I think.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we should, we should review that timeline, and hopefully we'll have a draft of the video. If not the draft of the video, at least the...
Press release or...
The script.
I got budget for next Tuesday at twenty-seven.
Tuesday.
Oh, next Tuesday at twenty-seven.
We changed it to Tuesday.
We did, perfect. So, yeah, so we'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Bruce between now and then and find out what our touchpoints are gonna be and when we're gonna get some stuff from him. But I know that he's been asking questions, and Brady's been filling in the blanks, telling him the assumptions of the way we do our accounting, so he knows what to show and what not to show.
And so everybody feels comfortable knowing the goal for next week? Because this is really, we're talking about a goal for next week.
I'm not gonna put it on the agenda for the twenty-seventh for us to set a budget goal.
Okay.
But I think we should probably think about having it early in July, because July tenth-ish, we're asking the department heads to have all their materials in. So before we start consolidating that, I think we need to give them some direction about that.
Is three days enough direction? Is it our next meeting you want to set it?
Well, if they give us, if, yeah.
And what's July eleventh?
July eleventh.
So we're gonna give them direction after they submit their budget?
They're gonna submit their budget, and we may have to go back and ask them to refine some things or review some things. The biggest assumptions that we make are the ones that Brady's staff plugs in for health benefits and wage increases anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually gave you till...
I was gonna say, you don't have until July twenty-eighth?
July twenty-eighth.
So we're asking to send it in early, but we don't know if we're gonna need it. So maybe July eleventh is a great target for us to have a goal.
Okay.
But really think long and hard, because a target of anything less than one of these two options really means we need to take a look at the, the services we're providing.
Yes, I see it, you know, on that page seven, depending upon if Ayers comes up with something, but do we try to distribute it over three years, or do we wanna just balance the budget right away?
Well, I could throw, I could throw a fourth, or a third calculation in there, and I could show you what it would take to balance it, and then we could go to five or six percent the second year. But that's a big number.
Don't hear that number.
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
You don't mind.
That's a question to ask.
Yeah.
I could do it for our committee consideration next week.
I'd like to see that number.
Yeah, just for that curiosity, if, if we have systems in place that help the people that can't afford it, it would be interesting to see the scenarios of, would it hurt them less to not afford it for one year or two years? Does that make sense?
We proved that last year, because the state, one of their things is not based at all on your income. You do not need to be low-income, but your taxes need to have a more than twelve percent increase to get it. And so we did hurt people.
So would we actually be benefiting people by having it in one year rather than two?
We said that circuit breaker is there with the state, and then, you know, that's...
The problem is that some people don't listen.
We went below that last year.
We would, we would honestly benefit if, if the conversations that I heard at the town hall meetings is, "We have to make this community more friendly to our, to our commercial people and make it easier for people to run a business in town."
Yeah, we scripted last year, they lost...
The best thing we could do is raise our tax rate to be equal to St. Louis County's tax rate. That would, that would put our commercial properties on par.
Yeah, because we are paying.
Because when we dropped our levy from nineteen to eleven, the businesses got a bigger tax bill than what they had been assumed.
Their taxes, their taxes went up from the state when they got in the fall, based on our preliminary tax levy.
And that's more of that education that we need to get out, because I've been working government for a while, and I didn't, that's the way that it works here, that we give money to counties that don't, that pay less more. You know, you just don't realize that unless someone explains to you how it works, that we're giving money to other counties.
I asked the people who understand how it works, including Brady and Jim Boyd, and I asked the people who understand how it works, including Brady and Jim Boyd, and I said, "Is this what we can assume would happen with fiscal disparities? If we did this and they both win?" It's a little complicated, but in practice, it actually did happen that way, because our commercial aspects pay into the fiscal disparities and the, and the state general sales tax. And their percentage of those bills, I, I keep going down, Best Western's a friend of mine, they pay seventy-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. Twelve thousand comes to the county. Twenty-five goes to fiscal disparities, twenty-five goes to state general sales tax. So we're collecting seventy-five thousand dollars from them and exporting.
Wow, that, oh, that just hurts.
Twelve thousand comes here, ten thousand goes to the city, and a couple thousand goes to the school. If our rate was the same as St. Louis County, their tax bill would be about the same or maybe less.
Yeah, but it would stay here?
But it would all stay here.
More would be here.
More, more would be here, it wouldn't all stay here, but more would be here.
That's a really, I mean, that scenario would be really interesting stuff, what it would amount to.
Yeah, observing this last year, is the mindset and the paradigm shift has to go that it's, it's not as simple as just a levy.
It's not.
Because everyone thinks it's the levy, and it's our, and I know that that was, you know, perpetuated by certain individuals, and it, it collected people that don't understand it or don't want to. But I think, uh, our, our purpose is to make sure that the best we can is to inform the public what this all means.
Even more important than informing the public is we had dissent amongst our whole board and people working against each other, and it didn't help the situation, it made it almost impossible for us to work as a team.
And I know from experience that when we start blaming the state or when we start blaming the feds, all we're doing is usurping responsibility to take care of our own decisions.
Right.
And that just is disparaging. It, it doesn't work, it's absurd, but those kinds of messaging things are just so misleading. They're irres, I'm sorry, but they're irresponsible.
Yeah, I had so much trouble for that word last year, I'm trying not to use it this.
We do, we do, and it's, I'm, I'm really sad about it, 'cause I heard it last week, is we've got staff that don't think that the work we do impacts the quality of life in this county. And the work that we do definitely has an impact on the quality of life. And that's the responsibility that I believe you all have as a board, is to determine what level of service is appropriate to maintain the quality of life that we're promising to people who come to live here, and the people who have always been here. I, I, I went through it with, with Julie. Julie, you know, God bless her, she's a, she's a great sounding board for these things. I said, "Julie, when you bought your house, what'd you pay for it, twenty-five thousand? How much was your taxes?" "I don't know, seventy-eight dollars, whatever." I'm like, "If we look at it, have your taxes gone up a lot?" "Oh, heck yeah, they've gone up a lot." "Have they gone up as much as the value of your house?" "No."
Oh, hell no.
"No, they haven't." And I said, "You know what? I get it, if you're on a fixed income, it doesn't matter what the value of your house is, 'cause you're probably not gonna sell it."
Right.
If you're, if you're past retirement age and you're, and you're in your home, the fact that the value of the house is going up doesn't really help your situation.
Right.
And unfortunately, you're in a situation where you're just kinda at the will of the elements. But look at it, the value has gone up way more than the, the level of taxes on it. She says, "Yeah, it has."
That's good value, that was good investment.
And that is.
Well, that leads to not only educating the public, we need to educate our staff, because our staff also worked against us in the budget process.
Well, and I'm, I'm having meetings, I'm going to all the staff, all the department staff meetings and having conversations about the budget, because I wanna understand what they know or don't know or believe or don't believe, and just try to give them enough information. Basically, I'm giving them an opportunity to ask questions.
All right, yeah, that's good.
Sorry, I was gonna be. And I, I, I do have to go, 'cause I have to talk to Pat about why I'm not giving my share.
Can you enter a Jeff's line, that we all do better when we all do better?
We all do better when we all do better.
We all do better when we all do better. Motion to adjourn, yes, second, yes.
Or is there another day between now and then?
We are adjourned.